Good evening and welcome to the August 21st, 2025, meeting of the Planning Commission of the City of Calabasas. It looks like we have almost a full complement of commissioners. We are missing Candace, correct? With an excused absence? Okay. Otherwise, we've got everybody. Michael, you want to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
(Inaudible) 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 (Inaudible)
Thank you. Okay. We have a motion to approve the agenda.
Move.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. All opposed? Hearing none, the agenda is approved. Announcements and introductions. We'll start with Commissioner Leah. Anything? Commissioner Washburn?
Just wanted to announce that I attended an event last evening in Malibu at Pepperdine in the State Park, or California Department of Parks and Recreation, State Parks. Made a second presentation on the expectation of building, or actually taking down the Ringe Dam after all these, you know, hundred years. Because it was built in 1927 and worked for about a year before it got totally silted up. There's now a budget at the state level, and the people there presented that. And I would say if anybody's interested in what that means for the Malibu Creek watershed, which is everything from here to basically to Thousand Oaks, and includes us and, you know, Gori Hills, Hidden Hills, and all the way down to Malibu, of course, that if and when that dam comes down, there will be a strategic plan to make it happen and a budget that's going to be really, really big in order to make it happen. But they have a budget through the plan. So if anybody's interested, you can actually look at the Malibu Creek watershed restoration project of the state parks on their CADPR website, and it'll give you the information. It's promising. I've been working on that for about, like I said, 35 years myself. And it's something that might actually eventually help restore the health and function of the Malibu Creek watershed. And Calabasas has always played a big part in that being prepared for whatever happens that's good in the watershed. So stay tuned.
Thank you. Commissioner Hesena? Nothing? I have nothing. Commissioner Harrison? Nope. Okay. Moving on. Time for public comment. We have no one in the... This is the time where the public can address the commission on matters that are not on the agenda, but seeing no one in the gallery.
Hey, guys.
Sorry.
We will move on to the consent calendar. We have, I believe, one item on the consent calendar, which is the minutes from the meeting of August 7th of 2025. Do we have a motion to approve?
I move.
Is there a second?
All second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And I'm voting because I did see the... I did watch the tapes, so... Of course. Any opposed? Hearing none. The minutes are approved. The consent calendar is approved. Moving on to new business. We are looking at the 2024 Calabasas General Plan Annual Progress Report. And I think there's a presentation, so I will leave it up to the staff presentation to explain what this is.
Thank you. Good evening, Commissioners. Tonight, Jaclyn and I will be providing an overview of the General Plan Annual Progress Report for 2024. So the reason that the Planning Commission is reviewing this report tonight is because Section 65400 of the California State Government Code requires a legislative body to review and accept a general plan annual progress report on the status of the general plan and progress towards implementing its goals and policies. Additionally, the Calabasas Municipal Code, Section 2.28.040, stipulates that the Planning Commission shall render an annual report to the city council on the status of the general plan and progress in its application consistent with Government Code, Section 65400. And lastly, it also provides local legislative bodies and the public with information regarding the implementation of the general plan for the city. So LCI, or the Governor's Office of Land Use and Climate Innovation, they do not mandate that every single element of a city's general plan be included in the progress report, but they do provide general guidance as to what should be in it. And those requirements are to submit an annual report on the status of the city's general plan to the Governor's Office of Land Use and Climate Innovation and to the California Department of Housing and Community Development, or HCD. You must present the annual progress report to the local legislative body for its review and acceptance prior to submission to LCI and HCD. And the last requirement that they include is you must provide information on the city's progress towards implementation of the general plan. So to provide a bit of background on the city's general plan, I'm sure many of you are familiar with it, but for those who aren't, the city's first general plan was adopted in 1995, and the city's first development code was adopted in 1998. And then following that, the city council adopted and updated 2030 general plan in 2008 to provide clarity on the implementation of the general plan policies because there were some discrepancies between the two documents. And then, since the 2030 general plan was adopted, several updates have been made. In 2021, a final environmental impact report was adopted by the council. In 2022, the revised 2021 to 2029 housing element was adopted, which was consistent with state law. And then in 2023, an updated safety element, circulation element, and implementation chapter of the 2030 general plan was adopted, also consistent with state law. And looking ahead a little bit, the city plans to begin the process of updating the current general plan in the next few years, and will be utilizing funding from the city's general plan maintenance fund, which is a fee that is charged with each building and planning permit.
So the general plan allows land use and policy decisions to be made within a comprehensive framework that emphasizes and promotes public health, safety, and quality of life for Calabasas residents. The annual progress report provides a list of actions taken by the city to implement the seven mandatory elements of the general plan during the 2024 calendar year as required by LCI. The seven mandatory elements are the land use element, the open space element, conservation element, housing element, noise element, circulation element, and safety element. The comprehensive list of all actions taken, along with the element and the applicable policy numbers, are included within your packets in the report attached as Exhibit A. And in addition to the general plan annual progress report, the city is also required to prepare a housing element annual progress report each year in order to report on the city's status and progress in implementing its housing element. This report also includes data on the city's progress towards meeting its housing goals, including data on all housing development applications, building permits, and building completions. This report is filed and accepted by the city council every year in accordance with Government Code, Section 65400. But unlike the general plan annual progress report, the city's municipal code does not mandate that the housing element annual report be presented to the Planning Commission every year. So that's why it was previously only reviewed by the city council. The housing element annual progress report for 2024 demonstrated the following. There were 99 new housing units that were entitled in 2024, meaning 99 new units that were issued planning approval. 16 units were issued building permits. And for the 2021 to 2029 cycle, which is the sixth cycle for the housing element, the city has 313 units remaining to be built, which means to be issued building permits in order to meet our RENA goals. And in March of 2025, the city submitted the housing element annual progress report to HCD and to LCI in order to demonstrate the city's progress towards meeting RENA goals and compliance with applicable state laws. So staff recommends that the commission receive and file the report and direct staff to forward the 2024 general plan annual progress report to the city council in compliance with Section 65400 of the California State Government Code. Additionally, for our next steps, we do plan to bring the general plan annual progress report, as well as the housing element annual progress report to the Planning Commission before review by the city council annually in around February or March of every year. Thank you, and we are available for questions.
Thank you. You made it very clear, but I sometimes have a need to talk about things that are already made clear. Just to be clear, excuse me, this is the general plan progress report, not the housing element progress report, correct?
Correct, yes. That was a separate report.
Okay. And the purpose of what we're doing today is to make a recommendation to council with regard to the report, hopefully forwarding it to council for their review. But ultimately, the purpose of this is for the benefit of the state. It's to comply with their requirement. It is not something for the benefit of the city. Is that correct?
Partially twofold. So number one, the state requires that the local legislative body review a general plan annual progress report. So in our case, that would be the city council. And then our municipal code separately requires that the Planning Commission review a general plan status report, I believe, every year. So that's why both of those requirements, the Planning Commission is reviewing first, and then the city council also has to review.
Okay.
And I can also provide a little bit more just overall context. So again, thank you, Jaclyn and Rachel, for the excellent report on the specific item. But just so that the... To provide a refresher for the commission, they haven't seen... The commission has not seen this before. So this is a new item that's being brought before the commission. Typically, in the past, what we do is we will always submit a housing element progress report to city council, and then from there to HCD because that is a very hard requirement under the state law, and it's very closely watched by HCD. And if cities do not submit a progress report on the housing element, then the city risks having their housing element decertified. So there's a real reason why we go... There's a reason why we go through that process. And we usually get an item to council around March, maybe April at the latest, so that we can submit it to the state on time. Separately, LCI, which is a different state agency, also require... Or the state law also requires that cities submit a progress report to LCI on the general plan. So it's not specific to the housing element. It's for the entire general plan. It is a state requirement, but there's not a lot of enforcement over that requirement. So it's just... It's not something that every city does. Our city has not done it previously, at least not in the past 15 years or so. And recently, in consultation with our city attorney, was advised that we do this because it is a state requirement, even though the enforcement isn't very heavy. We should be doing it. But it also gives us an opportunity to bring this information to the Planning Commission and let the Planning Commission see what is happening in the city, what happened in the previous calendar year. So I do apologize, we are a little bit late on this. Our intent moving forward is to bring the Planning Commission a report like this in the earlier part of the year to cover the previous calendar year. But we'll also bring forward a draft housing element progress report as well because it's information, and it's very useful for the Planning Commission to see what's happening. So we're taking this as an opportunity to move in a positive step forward. And, you know, we're here to answer questions and take feedback.
Okay. Thank you. And based upon what you'd said, it sounds like staff has basically had to kind of start from scratch in creating this report. And we're a little bit behind in when it should be done during the year.
Yes, that is correct.
There... Next year, there should be less time pressure and an opportunity to maybe tweak things a little more than is advisable this year, given the time.
Yeah, that... And by next year, we will hopefully have received feedback from LCI. Because as you mentioned earlier, LCI is really the agency that's involved in reviewing and accepting this document. So they do have guidelines on their website on what should be included in the report. And staff has done a good job of going through that and making sure we meet those guidelines. But they, even in their own guidelines, they recognize that they are just providing guidelines. They expect that every city will develop its own format that meets the needs of its own community. So what we will do is we'll submit this to LCI after this goes to council. And then, of course, we'll receive feedback from LCI. If they accept it, great. If they have comments or questions, we'll work with them and make sure we address it next year.
Okay. Thank you. All right. So keeping in mind that this is kind of a document of first impression. Commissioner Harrison? You have some questions, comments?
I have questions and comments. Do you want me to just...
Go for it.
Questions first? So the questions... Let's see, on page five. By the way, I think this is a good idea, even if, forget the law, I think it's a good idea just to review this. Although, as the chair said, you know, a little more time next time. So where's my question here? Continue to... On page five says, "Continue to field inquiries regarding development on sites within the city's affordable housing overlay zone and continue to review one application in process on a HO site." What is that site? Which one are you... Is that referring to?
That site? Let's see.
Or maybe Jaclyn.
I believe that's the Cruzan project.
Cruzan, yeah.
Oh, Cruzan is that one? And where are... So there's only one... There's only one that's ongoing.
Right. Just to clarify, we do have a second one. The Avalon Project is also in our HO, right? But that is not?
No.
Never mind. I was gonna say that was submitted 2025. So any actions beginning of this year are not included in here.
Right. This is 2024.
Yes, this is only the previous calendar year.
So we're looking back. Where in the world can we build 300-something units? Really, honestly?
We have planned for it in our housing element when we do our housing element progress report presentation for the council. We do have a map of the sites in our HO showing where that is potentially possible. All that we really have control over on the city's end is zoning for it. And then, as far as the RENA numbers go, they count... A unit counts towards our RENA when a building permit is issued for that specific site. So we have to zone to show that we can accommodate that. And then, a specific unit is counted towards our RENA when a building permit is issued. So...
All right. So in our zoning, we actually have 300 and whatever it is, 13 possible units?
Didn't we identify...
Like 1,200.
Didn't we identify the sites when we were doing the RENA?
Yeah.
When we were doing the review for the RENA requirements?
Correct.
That was all... All of the possible sites were laid out.
Okay. So it's just a theoretical...
Right.
Yeah, I can shed light on that, too. Our housing elements, the 2021, 2029 housing element, includes what HCD calls housing inventory sites, not limited just to HO. It's just all sites that the city has identified that housing opportunities exist. If you add up the allowed density for each one of those sites, it comes out to like 1,200 units.
Okay.
And that also includes ADUs. So we built in about 100 or so worth of ADUs over a nine-year period.
And that's probably a good source of...
And that is what most of our building permits issued, our four is for ADUs. We had 16 last year, and I think the majority of those were ADUs.
Okay. On... I had a question on page 10. It says, "You've completed preliminary design of a roundabout at the intersection of Calabasas Road and Muro Road to provide improved safety and access and allow trucks to make U-turns." Are you talking about like those auto... Automobile-carrying trucks that the auto dealers use? Can they go around the roundabout?
Yes. I don't have too much detail on some of these because this document was a collaborative effort between... We got information from Public Works Department. We got some information from Community Services. So some of these are... Some of this information was provided by other departments. So I don't have too many details on some of these. But yes, that is the roundabout and the trucks.
Okay. Because otherwise, I think that roundabout doesn't make a lot of sense in spending a million dollars or whatever it is. It just seems like that should go to the Ringe Dam instead of, you know, instead of there. But if it does allow those auto trucks to go, you know, the... I don't know what you call those carriers.
The transport vehicles. So that was actually something that was considered during the design of that and knowing that the purpose of Calabasas Road, at least on that section, is for auto dealership. So they use an engineering template to make sure that if you have a transport vehicle that exit... I mean, a lot of the transport vehicles are going to be coming southbound off the 101, right? And if they exit at the Parkway Calabasas exit, it actually just drops you on Calabasas Road, and you would make a right to go to those... Most of those dealerships.
Right.
Right now, so a lot of them face that direction. This would allow it...
Facing west, you mean?
Towards... Yeah, face west. This would allow those transport vehicles to use the roundabout to turn around and then unload at the sidewalk, which is what's intended for the new dealership.
Okay. I think that's actually a good reason. I... Okay. No, those are my questions. Do you want me to make comments, too, or just wait till everybody makes questions?
Let's do the questions first, and then we'll get to comments.
Thank you. Thanks for the clarification.
Commissioner Hesena? Commissioner Washburn?
I'd like to hear from all my colleagues before I shut my mouth off.
Okay. We're doing just questions right now. Okay. And we'll get to comments, for sure.
Ask Bob first, and then I'll... Because I've had a conversation with our Director of Planning and Development about the nature of this report and its importance. And I've personally been involved since before we were a city. So, you know, the questions I have, really, they're not in any way an interference with completing and filing this report. But it's an opportunity that we don't often get and haven't for 15 years to be able to talk about, what do we do next?
Yeah. Okay. Commissioner Leah, do you have any questions?
Yes. I couldn't find... I'm talking about page five and also on page nine. The first block. Achieve significant progress. Please demonstrate where I can find significant.
On the Craftsman Corner intersection.
So maybe this is for 2024.
Yeah.
I think we need to delete the word significant unless we can demonstrate.
Well, but...
I can tell you that, first of all, our efforts at annexing Craftsman's Corner, I can tell you that, first of all, the, our efforts at annexing Craftsman's Corner, I believe, started in 2014. So, it's been going on for well more than 10 years. Around 2018 or so, we hit pretty much a significant stalemate with the county. And there was literally no traction, no working or effort by the county to move that forward. Because we do have to go through the county in order to approve an annexation. Because they're giving up their territory. And so, there's a lot of negotiation that has to go on between the city and the county in terms of how do you relinquish sales tax that comes from that property tax? How do you provide services? Or the city has to demonstrate how it's going to provide services to that new territory. So, there's a lot of back and forth with the county. And we hit a stalemate with the county. We also hit a stalemate with Hidden Hills. There was a lot of changeover at Hidden Hills in their leadership. Their city council has changed a lot in the past six years or so. And Hidden Hills is part of that annexation because there are a couple of parcels that would have to go to Hidden Hills in order for that annexation to go through. So, working with all these different agencies, we did hit stalemates. And it, the, the application just sat in, in complete status, both with LAFCO, which is the agency that, that formalizes annexations, and with the county. When the current supervisor took office, there was an effort by her staff, by her and her staff, to reach out to the city and to start working on ways to collaborate with Calabasas. And her staff has been wonderful and has helped move the annexation forward. So, in the past year or so, and again, we're talking about 2024, right? We're not talking about a year from today. We're talking about through the calendar year of 2024. We did make significant progress. In fact, we had commitments from the supervisor's office that this would be placed, the annexation would be placed on the agenda for the supervisors to vote on and then move it forward officially with LAFCO. That's a significant progress.
Actually.
We're not there now, but in 2024, we had significant progress. We were very close to moving the annexation forward and beginning the final process with LAFCO.
When is it scheduled to go before the Board of Supervisors?
We're paused again.
No, it went on their consent calendar and then it was pulled off.
But Bob, keep some, yeah, but Bob, keep something in mind. This report is for, and it's always difficult to do when you have to kind of put blinders on. But this is a report for 2024. And what has happened subsequently in this year isn't part of this report. And I believe, if I'm not mistaken, that pause came again in 2025.
Correct.
Yeah, so, yeah, we, we do have, it's hard to do, but we have to keep that in mind, that this is for 2024.
Right, it came after our lawsuit. So, not 2024.
Okay.
Any, okay, any other questions? Okay, let's come back around for comments. Or Dennis, you want, you have, you want to pose some questions?
No, not questions so much as, I guess, a tonality and style of the report and the conversation ahead with our Director of Planning and Development, and that was very helpful. Thank you, Michael. This, like the green building ordinance conflict that we discovered and then fixed, if you know? Even though we could probably have argued for quite a bit of time about the Calabasas Municipal Code, green building needs and interests in the state. We recognize that it was, it was a status report that made sense because our staff has taken initiative to update things. And tonight, this is no different. This is an update on something that we, the city, considers important or has considered important in order to kind of educate ourselves as to what might happen next. And since this report was filed last time, we've had 30 laws at least passed in the state of California, starting with SB nine, that have changed the way everything is done in every city in the state of California. And at this point, having read this thoroughly and I came girded for battle to talk about what can we do to move from this volunteer report, really? Even though it's required, it's pretty much voluntary because we haven't done it for 15 years. And nobody's complained, you know, that's the other thing. And I learned at the time from our Director of Planning and Development that of the 400, and what do we have, 38 cities now in California? Maybe 38 cities actually are doing this? So, that, tell me if my numbers are close, Michael.
I actually don't know that number. I don't know where that one came from, but we can look it up.
Well, you told me that maybe 38 cities have actually prepared a report such as this. It's an update, right?
I don't remember that specific number.
Well.
But we're not aware of that many cities that do it.
That's the, that's the whole point. And the city was founded on the idea that we wouldn't wait for somebody to tell us what to do. We would say, what do we need to do? And then figure out how do we get there? And what obstacles will we face? And, you know, what forces will we uncover? And just like the annexation question, you know, the annexation question is probably still in limbo because we're having to accept, you know, probably 500,000, you know, cubic yards worth of, you know, burn waste from the coast and wherever else it might come from. And that's got the attention of the County Board of Supervisors. And we're kind of held responsible for that landfill. Last night and at this presentation, the State Parks Department said, "Two thirds of the excavation of all the material behind the dam, which is 850,000 cubic yards of stuff, two thirds are probably going to go to the Calabasas landfill," in their words. I had to correct them. It's the Lost Hills landfill. It's in the County Sanitation Districts two and four. And we don't even know what that means. But there's a lot of detail when you deal with anything like, how many units of housing should you do? Where should it go? What happens when they get burned up? What do you do and so forth? Well, in a way, this progress report is saying that on housing essentially by itself and general plan, and housing isn't a part of this yet, I don't think, isn't that right? This is general plan progress. And we continue to make general plan progress, but we've not frankly chosen to make a formal report on it. But our staff, wisely so, says that we should probably address the issue that the state requires rather than become the poster child for whatever SB nines or other things that come along. So, it's important that Michael and staff have actually taken this task on and have made this very cogent report, even though we could probably stall for another five years and no one would complain. And that's not the issue. Our own general plan pressures, and that's my comment, I think, as, as much as anything. You've heard me talking in many other Planning Commission meetings about, let's update the general plan. And let's get a, you know, a sense of what the community, which is very different when it started in 1991. And it's going to be very different as it goes forward. Every time you have, you know, rental properties, you know, replacing, you know, commercial and retail properties. And you have to argue like we all did here about various apartment and/or affordable or housing affordability products in the city of Calabasas. All that frankly has been guided by a general plan that was done essentially in 2008. I mean, done from 2006 to 2008. And not much since, other than as we all have chosen to deal with it on a kind of case by case basis. So, the report itself, my only concerns about it is that it puts us in a position because of the way the state presents the reporting process of being compliant and submissive and, you know, subservient to somebody in the Capitol or an administration that says, you will do this. And we're kind of coming up against that at every level of government these days. So, the fact that this report is done, and I think it's well done personally, but it makes me want to get into the general plan itself and how do we do that? And then what are the indications that we can give to our community that we should be all learning? What do we do now on an individual or collective basis? An example, and then I'll, I'll give a couple of specific things that I think that would be helpful to change in maybe the presentation. I think the tonality, where we say this report is to comply with the requirements of Section 65400 of the California State Government Code. Well, no one's saying you got to comply with that. We've chosen to do it because it is a code and we obey it. We obey the law. And our people, they tell us, think about it, let's do something. Well, you think about it for your whole city, and that's 26,000 people or thereabouts now. So, just the acronyms. What's RENA? Now, I was at, I was this city's and all the COG cities representative on the Regional Council of SCAG when the first battles over regional housing needs, and they called it assessment then. It's now kind of an allocation. And they put the burden on SCAG and the Regional Council to come up with the burden of telling all the cities of the SCAG region, how many units they had to build, of what kind and for whom and all that. Well, our HNA, we toss it around as if it's, you know, a dollar bill. We know the value of a dollar, at least we did yesterday. That's another story. But LCI, when I was, you know, first elected to this council, it was somebody's idea that we should have a governor's office of land use operational activity. We actually had somebody from Sacramento come down and tell us why it was being created at this council, not in this building over on Lost Virginous Road. So, those terms have an, have important meanings to them. And then can everybody here say what HCD stands for?
Housing Department.
Well, that's the point. And our staff knows, they're really good at this stuff. And they made a shortcut for us so we don't have to say Housing and Community Development, which could be used by the state to punish Calabasas for doing the things that we do. And we've tried to avoid that and have made decisions about land use in the city for that very reason. So, this report, as far as I'm concerned, could be filed as it is. But I would prefer that we use it as an opportunity to kind of change the tonality so that, you know, we're presenting what the, what we have done to advance the cause of our general plan update, as opposed to we are complying with the requirements of some state code. And that language is throughout, where we could actually just say, you know, we've taken the initiative. We think, you know, ahead, we, and our people do that. You probably had to go back and actually change your own language just to say, will they respect me if I send this report and I don't sound like I'm, you know, on my knee? Or I took my hat off to salute somebody? This city has been, from the very beginning, not rebellious, but realistic about, you know, all those things. And this report shows that. My only criticism is that it wants me to start doing something for the next general plan. And like I said, I was ready to actually gird my loins and come out and say, we got to do this, this, and this, an example. And I'll stop talking. When we incorporated the city and we got LAFCO to approve that we could go to the Board of Supervisors and we could actually argue against either the LAFCO or the supervisors, who really didn't want to have this as a city. And we were turned down essentially three times and ultimately twice as a city of Calabasas. And if they had their druthers, they'd put us in a little box somewhere and tell us to go away. That was then, this is now. Our supervisor now is actually looking to be realistic, fair. You know, the person came from the city, experienced themselves when West Hollywood incorporated. We were supposed to incorporate when West Hollywood and Santa Clarita and Diamond Bar did. So, the supervisor has the personal experience that none of the other supervisors have. So, we're kind of waiting for that supervisor to have an opportunity to put it back on that we annexed the space across there. When I drew the map for the city of Calabasas, the boundaries, and we used the school districts or the water district's boundaries, legal description, and saved ourselves about then $80,000. It, it was basically neglected and they eliminated the 2.2 square miles across the freeway at the Board of Supervisors. Because the people there, even though they want to be in the city, they hadn't done their due diligence with the supervisor to figure out, hey, is Calabasas going to be a better place to live and, and work? Or is the LA County Board of Supervisors going to be a better way to play? That's all part of the general plan process that we're embarking upon. And this report, which is a presentation, the way I look at it, to the state. And it's exceptional because we're doing something that 400 other cities in the, in the state have been shoving off to the side, hoping not to get caught on it. So, instead of having to deal with 100 million cubic yards worth of earth movement when we incorporated within five miles of where we sit this moment? 100 million cubic yards. At, I mean, it's uncanny to realize what we had to overcome in order to say, can we have a general plan that doesn't look like that? And that 100 million mostly included property that was in Ventura County. So, do we have LA and Ventura County to try to comply with? Kind of, because the state says, well, you got two counties there and you give all your money to them. So, as an educational tool, this filing is a great start, in my opinion. And I thank the staff for that. And I've got dozens of notes of things that I know that we need to address in the general plan. And we do that all the time here by saying, well, does the general plan say that it's okay to, you know, build that ADU or whatever it is? We've even gone to the expense of designing ADUs that are acceptable in order to help our people put them in. And you said we have ADU permits that exceed the permits for everything else that we're building. It's just going on like this. So, I will stop, but I commend the staff and I would like to turn in my comments. And I would encourage each of us to say, take the initiative right now to be prepared to push for a general plan update and work with the staff so that they're not kind of sticking their neck out, hoping that we'll say okay. Instead, let's say, let's all work together so that as in 1998, I mean, 1988, when we're struggling to get, you know, recognized as a city, what does it take to get a general plan that allows you to do it the way you'd like instead of the way somebody like Pete Chaburam would like? Pardon me, that was nasty to say. And he's no, he's no longer with us.
So, let's, let's move on.
Yeah.
A lot of really good background information and, and things to think about. And I'm sure you will keep those notes for when we are actually addressing some general plan, an update to the general plan. That, of course, is not what we're doing tonight. But lots to think about. Thank you.
I'll ask the question at the end of all that diatribe. Can we change the tonality so that it shows the initiative that you staff members have done and our attorney has done?
I want to make a comment before, before Michael answers that.
It's just a request because we would have to vote on whether that's allowable from the five of us.
Well, we have to, we can address whether it's allowable. And I, you know, at the end of the day, this report is generated because of a requirement from the state. And taking, taking the wording out? You know, sometimes you have to hit them over the head with things and say, here we are. We're complying, here it is. So, to me, it should be in there. It's not, it's not us bowing down to them. It's, the reality is, the state does control some things that we do very clearly. And there are things that we are supposed to comply with that come from the state. Just ignoring that, that this report is created primarily for that purpose? I, I personally don't, I don't feel the need to take the wording out, but that's.
Well, I'm not looking to take it out. I'm saying, can we not change the tonality? Not me, but the people who are preparing the report.
Yeah.
I think that our presentations next year or following that can change the tonality. But part of it this year was also explaining why this report is in front of the commission. So, it's important to provide that background context. But moving forward, our presentations to the Planning Commission can be whatever we want it. I agree with Chair Fassberg that the actual report should specify why it's being submitted to LCI. I wouldn't necessarily change that language, it's kind of more of a preamble.
But we're going to send this to the City Council and they're not going to know that we even had this talk.
They would if they watched tapes of our meetings.
They don't have tapes.
There's no tapes, it's all in.
Well, I call it tape.
That's the point. It's that, you know, all of that is old thinking, not wrong, but it's a shortcut to understanding. And I'm just saying, let's get hip. We're talking about, you know, an AI world and, you know, digital twinning of the planning of the future and all that other stuff. And I don't want to be taken advantage of that. I want to actually say, we're going to do better than what the state is demanding of, of the other 415 cities that haven't filed this report like Michael has prepared.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Is there an opinion that our attorney has on this discussion?
Well, I think you can modify the tonality while still making it clear that our intent is to comply with the government code requirement. So, you can state, we're going to comply with the government code and that's why we're submitting it. But we're also excited to share, maybe that excited's a little strong, but language like, this is also to present, you know, the progress that Calabasas has made in the last year to implement a very important plan for the community, something like that, so.
You can add to it certainly, but it's not a lea.
It's not a legal issue, right? So, the important thing is that the report's being prepared and it's going to be submitted to the state, so.
Okay, Commissioner Harrison, you had comments?
Oh, comments, yes. And thank you, Dennis, for your comments because I, and I guess we have to distinguish between the, what this is for and, and a review of everything that's happened, you know, in 2024 from our perspective. It may be different for what we have to present to the state. And that starts, my first comment, I guess, is on page five. You know, these are all very positive, I get it. That's, we have to present this to the state. But like, right in the middle there, it says, and this one bothered me. It says, increase the city's protected open space by adding 2.83 acres of new open space via the West Village Project. Not the, not the part about Olapenga. But that's like saying, I don't know, Mussolini made the trains run on time, to me. It's, it's, it's like, that's a good thing by itself, but it's, the cost of that is not in here. And the cost is like drastic. I mean, the entire hill, 20 acres are being destroyed. 20 acres of undeveloped land, to me, are being destroyed. I don't know how many, what would they say, like five Rose Bowlfuls of dirt are being moved around? And it, you know, and on top of that, we're building, what, 50 homes in a box canyon where people will not be able to get to Lost Virginous and escape in a fire? I mean, they're trapped. And, and so, there's like, it's like, this is a positive thing, but it's like in such a large, huge negative thing. So, I don't know if you can add the costs here of, of this? Or if you can have a section talking about, you know, local issues that, I mean, to the, to me, again, this one is kind of insulting almost. It's, it, can you add questions or issues to the state housing, you know, department? Or, or, or LCI about issues that their requirements have raised? So, so like, so, do you know what I mean? It's like, so here, they've required housing on a political basis. This is RENA and everything, has nothing to do with good planning at all. This, this is terrible planning. And they've treated every city and every, every community as having the same geography, same every access, you know? And, and that's terrible planning. It reminds me of the bullet train. That, that, that's very bad planning. It should have been probably down Highway five. Instead, it's political and so it costs a ton more and it's never going to get done. And, and, and this is, this is a political planning as opposed to good planning, putting housing in a very high fire severity zone with no escape route possible. They will not get to Lost Virginous. They're two blocks off of Lost Virginous in a box canyon. And it destroy, you know, and it destroys the hill.
If I may.
So, can we make a comment like that somewhere?
Well, let me ask you a question. What would be, what would be the benefit of doing so? I understand where you're coming from and I understand the concern with what happened with this project. But the bottom line is, the decision was made.
Right.
And, and sending. And sending a report to the state that criticizes the policies of the state and points out to them the adverse effect, there are other places and ways to do that.
Okay. Well, I'm just wondering, I don't know.
I'm concerned about putting that kind of feedback into a report like this. That would be my concern.
This is not a political advocacy report. This is just a neutral, objective report of what actions has the city taken to carry out the goals of the, and policies of the general plan?
But it's like saying, okay, so I was in the Soviet Union in seventy-three, and they had the most beautiful subways, marble, granite, and chandeliers. There wasn't a speck of dust, and there wasn't a person like sitting around. It was immaculate, it was beautiful. But it was also a place where everyone knew someone who disappeared, just disappeared. So how can we say it increases open space by adding two point eight three acres when it's, to me, is such a disaster? It's like, there should be some asterisk or some comment somewhere that, you know, this is as required by the, you know, state political planning or something. I mean, it's just insulting to me.
This is just a factual statement. There's a certain amount of protected open space.
I get it.
That it was added as a result of that project.
But if you can't make a comment, or, you know, this is controversial or something like that, it's certainly not a West Village.
Why poke, you know, why take something that is kind of, just kind of a formality in one respect and poke the bear with it?
Okay.
You know, there are times and places to do that, but this is an accurate statement.
But what is our city doing? Instead of advocating for a change in the planning or rational planning, our city, you know, our staff went behind our backs in a way and spoke to HCD and tried to get them to write a letter in favor of this. It's like, it's like, this is.
Now you're getting into politics.
Right, so that's why.
And that's not what this is.
And this is, this is an insult to probably the majority of people in this city. So it's not a positive thing. This is like a huge negative thing, and it's being presented as a, it's like barely factual, like the subways are beautiful in Moscow or Leningrad, but it's not the whole picture at all.
But this is not meant to be the whole picture, Michael.
Exactly.
This is actually a.
So that's why I said, can we have.
It's really a status report.
But so can we have an asterisk or a comment or something?
I would not be in favor of that.
You can maybe ask one of the council members to deal with that. But at this point, is, you know, is the report, you know, clear, concise?
Accurate.
And accurate and.
As far as it goes, as far as it goes.
Of the initiative that the city takes in general, and the answer is yes.
I mean, okay, so if this is, I mean, I think it's great to use this as like a planning tool and to update the plan, you know, the general plan. And if that's, if that is used, then this is not a positive thing. But if it's just, but it seems like lying to the state to me. It just seems just like a big lie. Again, it's like the subways are beautiful. So, okay, that's just my comment.
Think of who's going to read this.
No one.
Well, there's somebody that has to check the box and say.
Our staff will, which I think is good, because it's a good guideline and good. But I don't think anybody there is going to read it. So maybe you're right. But anyway, and the same thing on page six, on the top there. Let's see, on page eight, I had a couple of comments. I just wish there was a place for comments, or maybe that's just for our own internal purposes or something. So, you know, and again, these are all too, on the landscaping, we only have native and drought tolerant landscaping and native and drought tolerant landscaping, blah, blah, blah. But meanwhile, as I brought up at our last meeting, we haven't really, as a city, done anything to curb or stop the plastic grass, you know, the artificial turf. So again, this is twenty twenty-four, but maybe again, in a, just for planning purposes, our internal purposes, I think we really should get enforcement out there to do something about that, and not just notices, but. And then at the bottom of page eight, it says, we've developed, the city's developed a draft environmentally sustainable purchasing policy reviewed by the council and the environmental commission and so forth, which is good. But it seems like the environmental commission isn't even permitted to sit as a tree board anymore, contrary to the municipal code, which requires them to do certain things as the tree board, and that's disappointing.
The state doesn't care.
I know, the state doesn't care. I think this is for our internal purposes.
Yeah, and when we're actually looking at making changes to the general plan and implementing things, which is again, not what this is.
Me as like bothersome, or that other one was really insulting. We enforced, on the next page, we enforced the municipal code utilizing the city's code enforcement division. Well, you know, they didn't enforce the short-term rental problem in West Ridge. They just, they just didn't at all. And so that, again, I can, that's an internal thing. I think we need to get code enforcement out there to do some things, not just the grass, not just the plastic grass, but also short-term rental.
But again, different issue, yeah. Yeah. Different issue than what's before us tonight.
Right, but I wish there was a, like I said, an asterisk. Developed a draft set of pre-approved ADU plans, and I think that's fantastic that we did that. Agora did it before us, but I think that's great, and that we're working on the objective building standards. I think that's all great. On page nine, what was my comment there? Oh, yeah, the, okay. On page ten, I had a comment, I did the question. Oh, again, this is just an internal thing and probably should go to the, you know, the general plan. I'm still irked that we haven't painted the sidewalks. Like, you know, this is talking about all the sidewalks and everything, but we haven't painted the crosswalks like the ones on Park Sireno. I mean, you go out of City Hall here, and there's a crosswalk that's unpainted. I mean, no driver could see that there's a crosswalk there.
Is there a state inspector that's going to come and complain about the crosswalks?
No, there's no state inspector.
Again, we have to keep, we have to bear in mind what we're doing tonight.
I know, but I think, so I think this is a good guideline, not just, I think this is a report that we have to file, but I think it's a good, I think this is really good to have.
And it's also, remember, it's also, it's also progress, right? It doesn't mean that every single golden policy has been implemented every single year. It's progress. The city's going to be here for a long time. The general plan is a long-term document, so.
And I wish, and I wish the tone was a little more like that instead of just, sometimes it's like absolute, we enforced everything, we've done this, you know? Anyway, the safety element comments, I think that is really good. I mean, I really like that one. And let's see, all my general comments? Yeah, I guess that's it. I guess I already made them. I appreciate it. Just in general, this is really good to have from an internal point of view, not just something that we have to give to the state, which I assume will just be filed.
Yeah, exactly. But that doesn't mean that we can't keep our notes and use them moving forward when we're dealing with the actual issues.
Right, right. That was, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Huzano.
Yes, I'll keep it brief. I agree with you, it's not just for the state, although we are preparing it for the state. I think it's a great document to have internally and even externally as a reference point to point to how we're progressing as a city relative to the general plan. I think what I'm hearing from a few commissioners is some more detail would be appreciated. I think for the first go-around, this is great. You know, for example, with the Craftsman Corner annexation, let's, you know, if we can, just mention something like, just like we mentioned at the meeting, the ADU aspect to the new housing, the defensible space, you know, how many meters? I just, within reason, obviously, we can go into minutia in terms of detail. You know, staff doesn't need to allocate, you know, more resources than necessary. I get that. I understand, again, why we're preparing this. But I think, again, what I'm hearing from commissioners, and I would like to echo that, is that, you know, this document is a great reference point, not just for the state, and that some more details could be nice for the next go-around.
Thank you. Anything further?
I would just, I agree with Michael, and we should not take credit for disasters that we created.
Okay. All right, thank you.
That was like forced on us.
Well, would you change that? Because this is going to be submitted, so if there's something that needs to be edited, now is the time to comment.
They don't want to edit it. I saw that when they allowed significant to stay in without a description.
If the, I mean, look, if, this document is going to get referred to the city council, hopefully. If the commission wants certain things to be stricken from the document so that it moves forward at the council without it, we absolutely, I mean, that's, that is the commission's prerogative. So if that comment on page, I think it was five and six, should be removed, then we'll go ahead and remove it, if that's the motion of the commission.
Oh, I would remove it, because to me, it's like insulting.
We can, I would suggest that we at least keep the point two eight. It's not a lot, but it's there.
The what? Oh, yeah, no, definitely. That one is, that one doesn't destroy a hillside, you know, that's different.
Well.
This is like a net loss of seventeen acres as far as the way I look at it, not.
So do we have a motion?
Well, I'll make the motion that we approve the report, but I would invite conversation about any of the final details that we need to include tonight so that we can come to agreement on what edits we'd like to see.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second the discussion.
Thank you. Okay, now, discussion. What would you like to see revised?
I'd like to see the word significant removed on page five and page nine. Because that's, that's an opinion. That's not substantiated by the facts in the report.
Well, but in two thousand twenty-four, there was significant progress made. The fact that it has. I'm sorry?
An inch off a mile. And it's been fourteen years, and to say significant progress, that means it's going to be finished tomorrow.
Well, it really, it really moved, it really, considering that it's been fourteen years in the making, what happened in two thousand twenty-four, I'm not going to use the word extraordinary, because that's a little too much, but it was a lot. The fact that unfortunately, in two thousand twenty-five, it has backtracked a bit, it's unfortunate. But the fact of the matter is, in two thousand twenty-four, there was a lot of progress.
Well, how about, how about this? Rather than use the word significant, which is open to interpretation, I agree with that, we could just leave it as achieve progress in the Craftsman's Corner Annexation Project by coming to agreements with relevant agencies and leave it at that.
Does that work?
With that one word, tilting it.
Yeah, I mean, that's fine.
I would agree with that.
Yeah, okay.
And can we take out the two point eight three acres but leave in the point two eight acres? It's like, it sticks in my mouth.
I'm not going to make a whole deal out of it, but the fact of the matter is, it was added. But it was added. I mean, it's factual.
It's factual but misleading.
It's not misleading, it's just, there's a lot that came along with it.
Yeah, like destroying twenty acres.
But that's a, that's a whole different issue. But the fact of the matter is, there was two point eight three acres of open space added. I hate to take out something that is, that's accurate.
Well, maybe new dedicated open space or something, because it really doesn't take out, because it's already open space now, in fact. But maybe you could change the wording.
Well, it's protected now. It's now protected where it wasn't protected. Well, it does say it, increase the city's protected open space because it was before.
Michael, if we took the whole bullet point out, does it hurt the, hurt the report?
I mean, in the end, again, this is ultimately going to be a recommendation from the planning commission. So if you're uncomfortable with, if the consensus of the planning commission is that you're uncomfortable with the statement, then we'll go ahead and remove it.
Well, but the whole bullet point doesn't have to come out, because the point two eight acres that was donated.
But it's all part of a process that is so complex that you got two commissioners that are not happy with it.
Well, I think they're not happy with it.
What happens if we lose the bullet? Is there a big, is there a problem?
Well, no, Michael, you have any problem with the point two acres?
No, me, no. I thought you were talking to him. No, I don't have a problem with that.
Yeah, no, no, no.
I thought you were looking at him, I thought.
Sorry.
Oh, no, I don't have a problem with that, that one.
You know, Dennis, there's really no reason to take out the whole bullet point. It's just that, if you want to take out the two point eight three acres, you know, there's that much opposition to it, then that's fine. Commissioner Leah?
There was a disaster, and we're taking credit for it. That's how it hates me.
Well, no, 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 we're talking two different things. We're talking about, you're talking about the two point eight three acres. The point two acres, that was a land donation in Old Topanga. That's a whole separate thing that's in the same bullet point. So all I'm saying is, don't throw out, let's see, don't throw out the baby with the bathwater? Is that, is that the saying?
Yeah. Keep the point two eight.
Let's at least leave the point two eight in there.
It gives a statistical point to a concept of accepting land. And we do that all the time, and we're buying land in Old Topanga, and we're getting land donated. And it's a principle that the city has been following for, you know, thirty-plus years. We own a lot of land that we didn't before, and it's done a lot of good in a lot of ways, so.
If we want to, sorry to interrupt, if we want to keep that bullet point and shed a little bit more light on that policy as well, we could add that this city worked with the Santa Monica Mountain Conservancy on appraising vacant or land that's eligible or potential for open space.
You're talking about the two point eight three acres now?
No, adding to that. So we have the.
You combine the two pieces.
Point two eight acres and just add some language to the work that we're doing with the conservancy to develop really a priority list of potential properties that we would like to work with the conservancy to acquire.
And maybe money we can get.
That's good, yeah.
So we can add some language that addresses that.
Bob, you good with that?
Well, really, we lost all the acres that are going to houses, and we're taking credit for this little incident.
We're removing that credit.
No, it's removing the, removing any reference to the two point eight three, leaving in the point two eight in Old Topanga, but saying that they're working with, the city is working with the conservancy to.
Identify potential space for additional.
I think that's great.
If I could add, we do have the conservancy one in here under, on page six, under open space element. So perhaps we just combine those two bullet points?
I think that works.
On page six, it's the first and third bullet point. We could just strike the sentence we're talking about and then combine those two.
Okay.
Yeah. Does that work?
And they take the two point eight three off of that one also?
Yes.
Okay, yes.
That works?
Yes.
Okay. With those changes, are we ready to vote?
One other correction, Michael, that significant is also on page nine, the last paragraph.
Page what, nine?
Page nine, the last paragraph.
Yeah, so just make it the same.
Take out significant.
Yeah, we'll fix that one, too.
Okay.
Can I, can I ask the indulgence of the commission to change the sentence on the introduction that says, is to comply with? Instead, we instead, we can say something to the effect that we are presenting this report. It's just.
That's fine.
We're presenting a report, remove the word.
I think that we have, I think we have to reference the fact that there is a requirement by the state and we're complying with it.
And we're following with sixty-five four hundred. This is a presentation to meet the requirements of sixty-five four hundred of the state, which requires an annual report on the status.
But isn't that what it's, I'm sorry, I'm missing something.
It's an issue of tonality, and it's a silly thing.
So you want to say, you want to say what? The purpose of the general plan, annual progress report is?
Is to present the state of California, or present.
How about in compliance with?
What if we, what if we have both the language in there? So we state that the purpose of this report is to present to the legislative body and the planning commission progress and to comply with?
You can just say to meet the requirements of sixty-five four hundred.
If John's okay with that, I'm okay with that.
Wait, is to meet the requirements of section sixty-five four hundred, is that what you're saying?
Yep.
You don't, ooh, we'll have to talk about this, Dennis. You don't like comply. You don't like comply. Does that mean you don't like to comply?
No, I don't like anybody telling us that we need to comply.
Okay.
Instead of voluntarily saying, we have gone to great lengths, which Michael and his staff have done, this hasn't been done in fifteen years, and we could have complied fifteen years ago. Instead, we're saying, hey, we're presenting all the things we've done. And that's the beauty of this city, is that we take credit for the, for doing good work, and we own up if we are not doing the work that we should.
So will it work if it says the purpose of the general plan annual progress report is to meet the requirements of section six-five four hundred of the California State Government Code?
Exactly.
Okay. Can we do that? All right. Done. All right.
I made the motion, and I would just say that motion would include any of the things we just changed.
Yes. So we have a motion on the floor and a second, and as long as the motion, Bob, you were the second, you're good?
Yes.
Okay. With the revisions that we just talked about.
We vote.
Direct staff to forward, to forward this report as revised to council. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion passes, and.
I would just once again say that I think that this is a terrific statement of all the things that our city has done, warts and all, and, you know, you can't help but have little bumps on your stuff all the time, you know?
Of course.
And this is well done, and it's a great start for all of us to talk about, now let's get busy and do the general plan.
Yeah. Okay. All right, director's report.
All right, so the next planning, next scheduled planning commission is canceled. That was originally scheduled for September, September fourth. After that, we have a, another joint ARP and Planning Commission meeting to review the objective design standards. So the commission and the panel held a joint session, study session last month, and there was a lot of great conversation, and at the request of both the commission and the ARP, we worked with the consultant to schedule a follow-up, a second meeting to continue that conversation. We're hopefully, hopefully get direction from both the commission and the panel to move that along, at which point the next step would be to finalize the objective design standards and then begin the formal public hearing process. So again, no decisions being made yet, it's still in the drafting stages, and we'll hopefully have a little bit more details to be able to present to the commission and to the panel on, you know, based on the feedback that, that was provided at the last meeting.
And that meeting is when and where, so that everybody knows?
September ninth, at, I believe, six P M., right?
Yes.
And it'll be in Founder's Hall. So we're trying to, you know, we did the last one in the afternoon, this one's in the evening, trying to mix it up a little bit to try and get as much participation as we can. We do have it also posted on the official calendar for the, for the, on the city's website, as well as on the homepage. So if someone goes to the homepage, there's like five or six items that are rotating on there, and this shows up as one of the upcoming events. With that, we don't have that many public hearing items in the pipeline, so, which is why September fourth was canceled. September eighteenth might also be canceled, unless a public hearing item comes to fruition is, and is deemed complete between now and the next week or so. That being said, I do want to just mention, since we've been on the theme of stuff that has happened in compliance with the general plan, I did want to just talk really quickly about the last fiscal year. It has been a pretty busy year for the planning department, the planning commission, and community development in general. Just some quick statistics, the planning department in, and I'm, I, we talk in fiscal years, so fiscal years are July first to June thirtieth, so this is all relatively new data, even though it's the middle of the year. But last year, the planning department accepted four hundred and eleven applications, and that's everything from a temporary use permit to, you know, a mixed-use project. It could run the gamut of types of applications, or solar panels, for example. But they accepted four hundred and eleven applications, completed three hundred and thirty-two applications, fielded almost sixteen hundred questions from the public. Our building and safety department issued a little over fifteen hundred permits, plan checked about nine hundred and fifty projects, and conducted over five thousand inspections. So last year was a very busy year from a historical standpoint, that it was one of our busiest years, and our revenue was actually almost a million dollars over what was originally budgeted, so from a, at a department level.
Way to go.
Nice.
So, all, all, you know, trying to just say, our department's doing a great job, and they've been busy.
Thank you.
Allow me to add something to that, and that is that what we did tonight, and what we did just, meeting a tour ago with the green building ordinance, you know, confusion repair, and each of these preparatory documents is helping us help the city, the citizens of the city, understand that this isn't something governments doing to them. It's something that this community is doing to enable and to incentivize people to get in it. If you didn't hear the governor's speech today, what he asked everybody to do is to get in it. Has nothing to do with politics. It's like, be a citizen. Be a citizen. And that's what I think drives our planning department and our entire staff, and it's why I serve here, it's like, be a citizen. And it's really critical right now to do that. Here's, if you'll let me then add something.
Sure.
I, I asked the folks at the water district, you know, about what they might be able to do to help me with my outdoor irrigation system, and I learned about the Water Wise or Be Water Wise program that they have, which is a water efficiency survey, that they get the Metropolitan Water District to send their Water Wise Pros out to your house, and they'll tell you what's wrong or what you need to do to make it better on your irrigation system in order to save water. They'll do the same thing inside your house, so if you have leaks to detect, you know, the meters now at the Los Verdes Water District, you know, they're automated so that you can literally see how much usage is almost moment to moment, and they, they'll tell you, in fact, what your indoor and outdoor efficiency is. So I would just say, that's what it looks like to get a Water Wise report from the M W D under contract, and it's free, and they give me a bunch of sprinkler heads, and they fix it on a number of things that were wrong, and my water bill hasn't been as low as it has been in a long time. And I would just encourage everybody to use the, the resources that are available in your city of Calabasas, and the water district is right here, and it, it'll pay you, and it's, it's a good citizenship step to take, so be a citizen.
Thank you. And I will take that as your report. Commissioner Leah, you have a report?
No reports.
Commissioner Hosina. Commissioner Harrison.
Well, just to follow up on what Dennis was saying, because it's so good, I, the wa, I am signed up with the water district, and they did notify me that I had a leak going on, and that was because they raised the water pressure where I live to a hundred and forty pounds per square inch. Anyway, it was so large that, it's so high that it caused couplings to, like, leak, you know, to break apart a little bit.
Sometimes they blow up.
Yes, so, oh, and then, and then all my drips started blowing up, so I put in a regulator, but they also have discounts on the Ratchio water controller, which is climate-related, and it's just excellent, I can operate it from my phone, on my cell phone. So, and that was great advice, Dennis, I appreciate it.
Okay, thank you. All right.
I'm going to adjourn if there's nothing else.
Hearing no objections, we are adjourned. Thank you all. I don't.
You were, you were the last.